Any changes to tonight's agenda? If not, I move to approve the agenda. Roll call.
Motion by Schultz, second by Pope. Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carries.
Thanks. Next up are my absolute favorite part of board meetings: recognitions.
All right, I think we're gonna turn the mic over to Amy here.
Write stuff down because I could talk about this group all day. First of all, I'd like to thank you for having us here tonight and for recognizing the accomplishments of so many of our athletes here tonight. As part of our state send-offs, we meet with all of the state qualifiers and we reassure them that this level of success is not normal. Most high school athletes only dream of having the opportunity to qualify for state competition. So, we are so fortunate to have so many great athletes at Warren that this has become our norm. Tonight, I am honored to introduce our all-state and state champion wrestlers and our boys' basketball team who just finished their season with a second-place finish in the IHSA state finals. So, I'll start with our wrestling gentleman, Royce. Are you in the house today? All right. So, I'm gonna go to next slide on Royce. Uh-oh, sorry. I didn't know who my clicker was. Man, I don't know who made this PowerPoint, but I know. So, Royce is a junior. He wrestled at 165 this year. I'm gonna have to read these because there's so many, you can't memorize them. So, he was an Equa Valley Scuffle Champion. He was voted Outstanding Wrestler of the Tournament. He was a Whitlatch Invitational Finalist. He was an IHSA Regional Champion. He was an IHSA Sectional Champion. And in the IHSA State Tournament, he took fifth place and earned himself all-state recognition. Royce was also out sick for a large portion of the season and still was able to accomplish all these things. So, congratulations, Royce.
I'll just explain this once, but Royce, we've got from the school board, we've got just a little W pin. You can put that on your medal for long term and just remember where you came from and who you represent. We're really proud of you.
We're gonna bring up Caleb Noble. I'm gonna make you hold this because I'm happy that we have him here and they're gonna go up on the wall soon. So, Caleb is a sophomore. He wrestled at 113 pounds this year. He was a preseason Super 32 Champion. He was a Whitlatch Invitational Champion. He was a Cheesehead, which is a National Invite finalist. He was an Ironman National Tournament Champion, a Lake County Champion, an IHSA Regional Champion, an IHSA Sectional Champion, an IHSA State Champion, and he is also a two-time State Champion. He also won last year. So, congratulations, Caleb. Aaron Stewart, I'm gonna bring you up. Aaron is a junior who wrestled at 175 pounds this year. He is also a Whitlatch Invite Champion, a Cheesehead National Invite Champion, an Ironman National Tournament sixth-place finisher. He's a Lake County Champion, an IHSA Regional Champion, an IHSA Sectional Champion, an IHSA State Champion this year. His freshman year in 2023, he took third place and now he is a two-time State Champion. He won last year and this year. Aaron also is a, I'm gonna mess this up, but he is one of 16 humans that at the 16-and-under level won the Greco and Freestyle National Wrestling Championship, like in the whole nation, world, whatever. So, you're wrestling to try and play for the Worlds, right? In Greece this summer, so he could be a World Champion as well, so. All right. I don't know if our captains want to come up or the whole team wants to come up, whatever you wish.
Everybody.
We like people.
At least I'll speak on their behalf. They would like to present the board. They would like to present the board with their second-place in the state trophy to you this evening and also just recognize their accomplishments throughout the season, which wouldn't fit all on one slide, so we just went with the championship. So, they're proviso tournament champions, which is a decade-long tournament that's very prestigious, that basically is invite-only. So, they're back-to-back champions, so they're holding up. You probably can't see it unless your eyes are better than mine, but they're holding up a two because they're back-to-back champions. They're IHSA Regional Champions, IHSA Sectional Champions, IHSA Super Sectional Champions, and this past weekend, they took second in the state, which I think brought our community together and gave us something to get excited about. So, we appreciate that, gentlemen. Congratulations.
Next year. Next year.
Yeah. So, gentlemen, we are just so proud of you and fortunate that you are Blue Devils. Take a look around. It's not very often that there are so many talented high school athletes as classmates, and you have all made a name for yourselves, both locally and nationally. Thank you for all you've done to represent yourselves, your families, our school, and the community. Congratulations.
I can have Amy come back up here for a second. She's gonna hate me for this. Uh-oh. Stay in here for a second. Sarah's not here tonight, but this is for Sarah Stepek and Amy Longagro. Mrs. Bertola is actually at a conference tonight and couldn't be here, but we want to publicly thank both of you for your ongoing support and dedication to our students' athletic and activity programs. You are both amazing and work tirelessly for our school community. The amount of time you take to support, reflect, evaluate how to better our students, coaches, and programs does not go unnoticed. We often have a lot of success within our programs, but there are some state-level competitions that involve an immense amount of details and demand very little time to make sure information is clearly communicated. Some words that we've heard a lot: hotel rooms, meals, fan buses, ticket sales, wristbands, T-shirts, admin supervision, basketball and cheer team travel plans, IHSA conference calls, security, student section crafts, police-fire escorts, and of course, a weather forecast for a tornado outbreak, et cetera, was all a part of our week. You both made sure that every detail was covered for our students, staff, families, and community, all this taking place while spring sports began tryouts this past week. I just want everyone here to join me in thanking and applauding both of their efforts for their ongoing work, and we appreciate both of you. Thank you.
One last shout-out to all the student athletes tonight. You guys are amazing, a great representative of what Warren is. So, I appreciate you coming out here tonight. Appreciate all the efforts you put into your sports. If you want to stay for the rest of the meeting, you're more than welcome to. If you and the families would prefer to go home and find something else to do and were to leave now, none of our feelings would be hurt.
It's a good feeling though, while they're there.
Yeah.
Okay, next up on the agenda is some time for public comment. No one signed up, but that does not prevent anyone, if you'd like, to address the board. The podium is yours. Just state your name and address, and you can have three minutes to address the board if you would like to.
Don't be shy.
Okay, moving forward, let's go on to committee reports.
Administration doesn't have anything to add to the submitted reports, but we can answer any questions if you have them.
Do not. Is there anybody else? Let's go on to superintendent's reports then.
Let's see. Really, I also don't have anything to add to the written reports specifically. I do have a group of staff that I would like to invite to come give a report out from the visit that they did. We did one visit earlier in the year in the fall and we had those staff members come and just share their experience. So, we had another group that visited the Bronx a couple weeks ago, and so I thought it'd be good to just give them some time. But if you have any questions about any of the submitted reports, we could talk about those first. Okay, then let's invite these guys up here.
How's the Bronx?
Hello.
Was there a lot of people?
It's a lot of people.
It was a good trip. I'm Sean Smith. I'm a math teacher and instructional coach at Old Plain Campus.
I'm Ashley Mr. Wood. I am a dean here at the Almond campus.
Yeah, I want to tell you a story about our trip to the Bronx. If you've seen the movie The Bronx Tale, it's about a teenager. He's got his dad, who's a straight-laced guy, but the kid befriends a local mafia guy, and they're both trying to guide the kid and they're just trying to look out what's best for the kid. And our trip to the Bronx kind of did a similar thing as well. So, we're gonna just share our experience about visiting Fannie Lou Hamer Freedom High School in the Bronx, New York, and then if you've got any questions about what we saw, we'd love to answer them. This is Fannie Lou Hamer High School. People that went were...
Myself, Ashley, and that's Yolana Fulton. She's also a dean here at the Almond campus. And that's Kyle Arnold. He's a counselor here at Almond.
And at Old Plain, it was Erica Loebin, a counselor at Old Plain, and Greg Janzik, a math teacher, lead teacher at the Old Plain campus, and myself. That's me looking sad because everybody else got the shirts of Fannie Lou Hamer, but I left mine on the desk when we were leaving and they all wore it the next day.
Because he was too busy socializing on our way out.
Yeah, but I was sad.
Networking.
This is Fannie Lou Hamer. She was a civil rights leader in Mississippi in the '60s. She's famous for a few things. Nobody's free till everybody's free. She's also famous for saying, "I'm sick and tired of being..."
Sick and tired.
Sick and tired. There's no data that she was ever in New York, let alone the Bronx, but the reason why they named the school after her is because the guy who did name the school saw a lot of the similarities between the systemic racism that she saw in Mississippi she was fighting against in the Bronx. The Bronx Highway, which is right just north of the high school there, it was built during the '40s, the '40s through the '70s. The community there really blamed it for a lot of poverty and urban decay throughout the city. The South Bronx is some of the poorest neighborhoods around. In fact, Fannie Lou Hamer High School is in the lowest, is in the poorest congressional district in the country. So, here it is here. If you want to go see a longer, somebody followed us around and filmed it if you want to check that out. But Fannie Lou is part of an organization called Big Picture Learning. It's a group of schools where they follow a Oria, I don't know, but it's one student at a time Advisory System, Real World Learning System, Interest Driven PBL, and Authentic Assessment. The first one is one student at a time. They're all about cultivating the brilliance of every young person. Essentially, they just develop like an individualized plan for every kid that goes through. There's a video that we won't make you watch, but if you want to, you can go and check it later.
And then I'll jump into the A, so the advisor system. We believe in small learning communities based on relationship relevance and rigor. So, there at Fannie Lou, they had an advisor system built for ninth and 10th grade, and then you went to a new advisor, 11th and 12th grade, and that advisor was really your person. A lot of the students talked about their advisor being like their second mom, someone they can go to for anyone, for anything. Their advisory was really a place where they had a small community, a small family, and at times, they would work on academic things, but they really built social-emotional skills. And so, throughout the week, they would develop skills as well as identify what do they need at that moment. So, thinking about that universal language of, you know, "I'm here for you. I'm caring for you," but also, "What do you need?" A couple other things about their advisory system is that they worked within houses within the building, and so they built a lot of pride. They worked together to create activities, and you'll see in the schedule, they also did things like give back to the community, making pancakes and breakfast, and figuring out other ways that students can demonstrate some of their mastery. Here, they wrote that advisory is a core organizational and relational structure of picture schools, often described as a second family by students. Advisors meet daily and have few students with a goal of 15 and continue for a minimum of two years, so ideally four. Here, they did two years, freshman, sophomore, working on some of those foundational skills. You know, how can we build a growth mindset? And then moving to your junior and senior year, really focusing on what do you plan on doing after high school and how do we help build your portfolio? This is a picture of us where we got to engage in one of their circle activities. They do a lot of their work within circles. They demonstrate restorative practices, and so they start with being in a circle to do something fun, light. We got to do it a game, and then they build it into, if there's a conflict, they work within their advisory system to help manage those conflicts within the school. Here's an example. We just took it right off their board, what their weekly schedule looks like for their advisory. So, as I mentioned in terms of, on Monday, they're just making pancakes together and serving them to the entire building, and so it's a way for them to give back to their peers and to their staff. It's also being used as a study hall if they have time to get work done, and their advisor is really the person they check in with about what do you have missing? What do you need to complete? A lot of these activities are low to minimal prep, with the lasting activity on Thursdays, looking for financial literacy, where they utilize community-based members to come in and help teach some of those skills. And so, the teachers weren't necessarily instructing on financial literacy. They had community members come in, and you'll see that throughout the presentation, their connection to the community was amazing. They really leveraged everyone within the community. They helped students understand what it was like to be a student within the Bronx, the history of being a student that lives in the Bronx, and what can you engage... lives in the Bronx, and what can you engage in after you graduate. And so in addition to connecting with jobs and internships, what else does your family need? And so they were really a resource center in terms of, what does your mother need, a connection to her, and making sure they're reaching out so they get it.
The model that they use there was unique in that, like Ashley said, it was nine, 10, 11, 12, because they were doing kind of different things at each level. But they're about 15 kids. There'd be eight, let's say, eight of each, freshmen and sophomore, but then the sophomores would go to the next level. The freshmen would become sophomores, and they would bring in eight new kids. But now, whatever culture was developed within that group kept going, and the sophomores kind of mentored the freshmen as they came in. It was a neat model. One of their alumni was a woman named J.J. Grant, who is an artist and runs a program during the summer, I think during advisory at times too, where one of the things they want kids to get is understand themselves, you know, instead of "I see you, I see me." Figure out what they're about, so they can figure out where they are trying to go. It was a really cool thing. That's what we were building in that blue one.
She was one of several alumni that we got to meet, so that was another connection that they stayed in touch with their alumni. So the gentleman that fed us breakfast and lunch, he was an alumni. He had a food truck posted outside, preparing meals on the spot for us. J.J. Grant was a fashion designer who started and implemented a program in the school as well as mentoring middle schoolers, and so she connected the high schools with middle schoolers in the community. She's been all around the world. And then we met an additional alumni who was currently in law school and came back and did some restorative practices and helped students, help others vote in the last election. And so they had a really great tie to community members as well as keeping in touch with alumni, alumni wanting to come back and feed it into the school.
So advisory was a big part of their thing, but the other part was the real-world learning systems, actively pursuing their passions, mentored by professional adults. They had a thing about leaving the school to learn. They leveraged the whole area to help kids learn whatever they were trying to get into, and interest-driven PBL, project-based learning, designing and co-designing their learning opportunities. For a lot of kids, right, like a liberal arts education or, you know, AP or dual credit, it's a broad, a mile wide and an inch deep. The approach that they do is depth rather than breadth, and so particularly for kids where that model's been hard, help them find something they're interested in and dive deep on it, rather than just trying to learn whatever they, we want them to learn. And so they had a thing, the Bronx River was a big part of their area, and one of the things they had for underclassmen was rocking the boat. Kids could go to this thing, and they would learn how to build a boat. So they did carpentry skills and boat-building skills. They also had like a lab that they would test the water quality and collect samples. So like anything about a river, there's so many things that a kid could find to pursue and study. It was a really cool thing for them to do.
I chose to go to the Art Center. So this is a local center in the Bronx that students can go to. They leave school and they go explore the artistic abilities. And so art is a passion of theirs. There's an art teacher there onsite, teaching the students. They're also able to see community members come in, if you want to keep going to the slides. This is artwork that I took pictures of, examples that local artists can rent out space for free there. And so this Art Center, again, giving back to the community. If you think about living in the Bronx and, you know, the small boroughs and what we saw, the small apartments, and not really having an art studio to explore your gifts in, this studio is offered to them for free, where they can come and rent out the space, and students get to see this transaction of, if it's something I want to continue to pursue, this center might be able to pour into me when I'm an adult as well, and then I can give back to my community.
That brings us to A, the authentic assessments. They are portfolio-driven, so, you know, whatever they choose to learn, they develop a portfolio. And what these kids did is they brought a bunch of them in, they deployed them at us, and these kids just showed us what they learned. They went through all their stuff, and it was on display for everybody to see. Yeah, it was really cool to hear the kids get really passionate about whatever they were passionate about. So they used their language.
And I was just mentioning, the students graduate by portfolio, and so when they go to cross that stage, they've already developed and mastered skills that they've outlined that need to be within their portfolio. And so the students were beginning to show us some of their draft portfolios that they plan on presenting this semester for graduation.
Could you talk a little bit more about that then, like graduate by portfolio? So you have core classes, I assume, and then how do they organize the rest, like evaluation of graduation then?
They had classes, and that was kind of a traditional thing. Junior or senior year was an internship with somewhere in the community.
Everyone does an internship?
Yeah. And then...
They call it red tags, and so there was different areas of mastery that you needed to master in order to graduate. And so let's say there's seven red tags, and so throughout high school, they know that these four red tags are really just for senior year, so you wait till senior year because you've already demonstrated the foundational skills to lead to that red tag.
So could I just ask, did you get a sense of how they structured that senior year day? Like, is it every day they go to internship?
Every day they go into internship.
Is it a half-day?
They also shared their schedules. They are on a block schedule, and so students, there's no bells. They know when to navigate from each block and where to go within the building, and so their advisor is really their core person that helps them navigate what they need to take their senior year, as well as if they're going to be out of the building or where they're going to be located. That's really their home base.
As far as the structure, there was a guy, Son, he's got all the... We could reach out to the guy that took us around. Son's got all the, he's got all the answers.
Yeah, I'm just curious how they like stack that like in a day or whatever. Do you have any sense of how long they're gone from campus for an internship, like each day, right, you're saying?
I don't remember exactly if it was each day or twice a week.
Or once a week.
Something like that.
Depending on the camp or where they're going.
A local business or organization and...
Sounds very flexible per student. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
There's no like...
One student at a time, so whatever that student needed.
Okay, I got you now.
Did I hear you guys say that this was the poorest congressional district in the country? How do you, didn't that restrict opportunities for internships in terms of businesses? I mean, how do you, how did you, with a poor economy, I'm assuming it's a poor economy, how did you find, how do they find internships for all these kids?
Not exactly sure, but they had, so the Bronx River Lines was, there's like, the Park District was right across the street, so they could do stuff with that. There was a hotel right across the street. They were telling us about a kid.
As a resource center where they could go and learn about what it's like to be a social worker and give back to the community and find resources for families. They really made do with a little.
There was a hotel somewhere. They told us a story about a kid who wanted to be in hotel business, did an internship there, and realized they'd never want to do that ever again.
Because I wouldn't think there'd be a hotel in the poorest congressional district in the country, but I guess I'm wrong. One other question, did you, how did you guys select this school? Did they choose you or you choose them, or is it a national thing, or how did this work?
So I chose the school, well, I chose the network. When, last year, we did some work with the School Improvement Network out of Wisconsin, visited some schools. I was just looking for, you guys had suggested that we continue to expand the schools that we're looking for, so I was looking for a national network that aligned with some of the principles you shared, and the OREIA framework seemed to align. So Big Picture Learning has hundreds, some odd schools, but they run 10 organized visits during the year, and so you can sign up for the visits. It's the same network that the school was part of when we sent a team to Tennessee. These guys went, and then we've got a group going to San Diego Met later this month.
When we went to Tennessee, they recommended that we check out the Bronx. You know, another piece about this school is that they choose students that are the lowest quartile academically within the area, and so these are at-risk students receiving the most help and support and guidance through high school.
Presentation's really good, by the way. The details were wonderful. It makes it, kind of brings it to life a little bit. But how many students do they have?
Four hundred.
Four hundred, because the last one was a hundred, wasn't it?
The last one was only in their second year of inception, and so they were slowly building.
They were building up to it, right. But anyway, well, that's wonderful. They could serve 400 students that way, and I really like it. But that's one of the things I always think about because we're so big, is how many students can they do? Is it scalable, you know, to more people? But it sounds like they built up to it, so it could be small, and then you could build up to it in a bigger way, so.
And they talk also about, you know, you can pick and choose what would be helpful for your building from their principles, and so you don't need to do everything that Fannie Lou's doing. However, there are elements that we could be duplicated in a building like ours.
Yeah, you can't do what they did for all of us, but there's pieces that could, we could do, but like, there's things that they do could fit within us, you know, programs within what we do.
I'm curious about that. Could you tell us what's something that you saw there that you think meets a need, that's a need that you're concerned about, you know what I mean, that would fit here?
My own opinion here, but like, that project-based learning thing, the depth versus breath thing, there's a class of kids where, right, what we want them to learn has just been a challenge, and so just taking a different approach, that could be something that could fit within us.
To be engaging in a different way. Yeah, yeah.
I think the beauty that they have created these advisories that feel like family, and so thinking about, you know, I know we're talking about next year and freshman seminar, you know, and so how can we kind of create a space that's similar to what they've been doing at Fannie Lou? And thinking about the whole child and their needs and some of those foundational, social-emotional skills they need in order to be successful in high school.
You know, it reminds me back. Household model. They started building nursing homes in having households, and it would be 15 residents to a household, and it made it like a home environment, and that's what I'm hearing. They've become almost like a podular family, like, I don't know if podular is a word, but did you like that?
It is now.
It is now.
It is today, all right? But it's like, they create their own little family, a pod of a family and stuff, and it reminds me a lot. And then care plans or plan of care, or, you know, their plan is individualized and based on their individual needs, and it reminds me a lot of that model, person-centered care is what we used to call it. But could you tell me a little bit, when you said earlier, this is fascinating, by the way, so I'm so geeked out, I'm sorry, I'm peppering you. But like, so when you were talking about they did conflict resolution, did they give you an idea what that looked like? Like, was that peer-to-peer conflicts? Was that peer to, or student to teacher? Was that community conflict? Like, what, did they give you any sense of that, like the restorative stuff that was going on?
Yeah, you know, when we visited, we also looked at their website, right, and so restorative practices is one of their guiding principles that they've been using to resolve conflict for a while now. But also, when we were there, we asked the question, like, what happens if a student's in their advisory and they don't like their advisor? Well, we worked through that. Like, rarely is there ever a real issue, a genuine issue, that a student does need to be with that advisor, with that adult. And so we work with that relationship until we're at a place where they do feel safe with that adult, until they do feel like they're connected to that adult. If there's an issue within the advisory, they circle up and they talk about that. So the advisor, the problems aren't brought outside of the advisory, they're handled within.
And it's a different relationship, right, than a teacher does with a student. It's, you know, it's much lower in terms of... I'm just here, you know, no matter what, I got your back, right? And that's a different dynamic than the teacher-student relationship.
I just want to start off by thanking you again for the time it took to go to these schools and the time to come here and tell us about your experience. Greatly appreciate it. I mean, I especially was appreciative of what you spoke about, about the advisory. Because at high school, I had had advisory, and to me, that was an integral part of my high school experience, so I think that's fantastic. But my question is, once you left there and it's in the rearview mirror, what experiences there really resonated to you, whether you could implement it here or not, but really just stuck out in your head as, "That was really cool. What a great idea."
You know, for me, I got to experience Chattanooga and the Bronx. And one difference, although a lot of the foundational principles are the same, is that in the Bronx, they tie everyone back to their community. And so students learn about the history of the Bronx, the systemic racism, and they have this newfound self-efficacy of, "It's okay to live here, and it's okay if I never leave, and I feel proud to live here," and it's because of that school. It's the amount of time that they pour into the students, and they have a better understanding of what their community has to offer, and so they feel safe when they graduate. They're not as scared, they're not as worried, because they already have foundational skills learned at school as well as connections in the community that help them feel like they're going to be okay.
That came out in your presentation, by the way. That was very evident. I heard that, so, and the community members coming back to help, so, yeah.
Thank you.
So one thing I would note, they brought, they mentioned the individual son, who now both in Chattanooga and in the Bronx has been part of our learning.
Great experience for us.
Yeah, got it. That's a good way to describe it. Part of what we're doing here is some window shopping. Last year, we worked with a network on some visits, and we learned some things. This year, it seems like the staff that go to these schools are having a really, almost transformative experience. The things that I'm hearing from them are, "Yeah, this just made me think differently. This was a really amazing experience." And so I have started talking to Son about helping us design our freshman seminar class, because it seems like what we're seeing in terms of their advisory system aligns with what our staff feel like could be a good experience. We've got a great group of counselors and social workers that offered to help design a proposal for that, that you could look at as a board, hopefully in the fall. So I'm working through with Son the possibility of having him come out and work with that team on doing that.
So as a next step for us, this would be something that we would look to implement for fall with the freshmen? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, I think the, well, our...
What would be our next step?
Yeah, our definite next step is we've got a group going to Met here in a couple of weeks, and then Son would come in probably here in the spring, meet with our design team, and identify some of the values, maybe look at the structure, what big picture, what could that look like? We would bring a proposal to you in October when we do course proposals, and if that is approved, then we would work the next six to eight months, like we do with all new courses, to finalize the curriculum, assign students, and however, whatever structure it is, and then if it happens in the way that we're kind of thinking as we're talking, that it could happen with freshmen, because maybe we'll end up in a different spot when he comes in and talks to us, but then it would really be 2006, the fall of 2026, for the 26, 27 school year.
I want to echo the sentiment of appreciation of you guys and others going out elsewhere. I know you have really busy jobs here and stuff that you're missing by not being here, but the willingness to go somewhere else and observe, and I will tell you, my expectations are not just if there's a spark of inspiration that's gained or just thoughts, and I think so often, we get tunnel vision of what's happening in Grayslake, what's happening in Mundaline or Lake County or Illinois or even the Midwest, and fail to recognize there's great things happening all over the place, and sometimes that, you could have read an article, but I think going in person probably was a lot richer in experience. So, you know, my baseline has been met just by a group taking time to go and just think about things, and whatever that materializes into or not, that's okay. Like, I just appreciate what you did, so thank you for that.
It was a beautiful experience. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm actually, you know, every time a group comes up and talks about a school that they have visited, it's like, "Oh, man, I should have gone."
Reading an article wouldn't have done that for me, so thanks.
Dave got the slides. There's an Instagram video of the video, if you want to see more of it. You can check that out. Yeah, thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
That's all I have for my section. Thank you, sorry.
No problem. Next on to the consent agenda. I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented, which includes Exhibit A, Personnel Recommendations, numbers 75 through 83 as posted, and Exhibit B, number B21 as posted, the payment of bills dated March 18th, 2025, in the amount of $5,159,618.05. The regular meeting minutes of March 4th, 2025, keep the executive session minutes closed for the September 24th, 24, November 19th, 2024, December 17th, 2024, January 21st, 2025, and February 18th, 2025. The resolution authorizing the destruction of rebate and recordings, the annual Illinois High School Association membership... the annual Illinois High School Association membership renewal for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, and the approval and authorization of the executive, the executive of a five-year copier-printing lease and order service agreement with Image Systems and Business Solutions.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Martinez. Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
And Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carries.
Thanks. Next up are a couple of discussion items.
Um, yeah, so the first discussion item is graduation requirements. We've been talking about graduation requirements for, um, probably a year and a half now. It's actually part of our strategic plan is to just continue to look at that. Um, so I, in January, talked to the board and described a process I had gone through with an, um, ad hoc committee, where we were at and some thoughts that we had, uh, as part of our committee of the whole meeting in January. So that group, uh, is here to also, uh, just give us an update on kind of their experience, their perspective, on that, that topic. Does that sound right? Is that the right intro? So we're gonna hand over a little time to them, I think.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Um, I guess we can probably just introduce ourselves as we speak. Would that be okay with you?
Sure.
Okay, um, so I am Michelle Fischetti, and I wanted to start, I'm gonna kind of build off of the momentum of the visit, um, since four of the five of us standing here went to Chattanooga. So we are kind of coming at you, um, with very similar enthusiasm. I know graduation requirements doesn't sound enthusiastic, but bear with me. You know, you, you, we talk about these, um, things that inspire us and we're passionate about. And the genesis of how we are standing here today, um, I would love to thank all of you for, first of all, um, allowing us this opportunity. This is kind of unprecedented. I've taught here a long time. I'm not gonna quantify that with exact years, um, some of your children, in fact. And I have never had this opportunity to have dialogue, um, about very important matters. So I thank you, Danny, for that. I thank Nikki for that. Um, we're standing here because we've forged this relationship. And, um, I'm gonna hand out to you, we kept it kind of simple, just a couple images. Oh, go ahead, thank you. Um, we're gonna each speak to them, so if we can kind of go through, um, the data that's in front of you, it should make some sense as, um, each of us speak tonight. So I'll wait till it is in front of you before I go to the first thing. Um, so if you will indulge me, just a little context, um, I know that you are aware that we reduced our requirements in two thousand twenty, um, partially in anticipation of what if the referendum does not pass a second time in COVID. And, um, when that had happened, um, we thought it was a temporary, like, the staff was a little confused about, um, how long that was going to be put into place. And so as we, uh, started to sort of digest this change, um, I, I would say probably over at the Almond campus, we were seeing, as this was implemented, um, a lot of students, by the time they reached their senior year, for lack of a better term, a lot of free time. And, um, we were concerned about not having relationships with the students because they were not in classes. They didn't have to be in classes. And so, uh, the first piece of data that you have in front of you was a survey, uh, that we put to the union members. Um, there's other questions. I can share the entirety with you. I didn't print everything. Um, but I want to make it very clear that this isn't five of us up here with, with an agenda. This is on behalf of our staff who felt pretty passionately, um, that they wanted to return the graduation requirements. And what that looks like, if it's an advisory, you know, in the future, that, that's awesome, too. Like, it's not just reinstate it to reinstate it. We have a lot of reasons why we feel we want to have relationships with students in our classes. Um, so that's what the first piece of data sort of represents, um, the teachers who replied. Um, they were able to sort of pick, you know, where they felt the, the requirement should be, so you can kind of see where that landed. And, um, I just wanted to make sure that, that that was clear when we started tonight. Um, other than that, I think we're gonna switch it over to Jenny and let Jenny talk.
Hi, I'm Jen Scahill. I'm one of the counselors here at Warren. So I'm gonna talk just a little bit about some of my experience. Um, I've been here for twenty years and doing credit checks is a big part of my job. So every semester I print the transcripts of all of my students. I check off what classes they have passed towards their graduation requirements. I see what classes they're missing. So I kind of have like a big picture idea of how our students are doing in terms of graduation requirements. Um, and just to share, so when we reduced the requirements from twenty-two and a half to eighteen and a half, what we reduced was electives. The core classes stayed the same, so they need the same number of English, math, science, social studies, and PE classes that they needed in two thousand nineteen. But we went from requiring students to have eleven semesters of electives to three semesters of electives. Um, and what I wanted to share, so in all of my experience of doing credit checks, making sure that students are on track for graduation, any student I've ever had in May of their senior year who has not met graduation requirements and who has not graduated, it's because they have failed a core class. I have never, ever, ever had a student not meet graduation requirements because they didn't have enough elective credits. So I heard your, your last board meeting and I am on the same page with you. My mission in life is to make sure that all of our students graduate from high school. That's very important to me. So I would never recommend anything that I think would harm that. Um, so I just wanted to, to make that point. Um, and also I, I was just curious, so I did a credit check of all of my juniors and I looked at what do they have coming over from Oak Plain? Eighty percent of my juniors had already met the elective graduation requirements at Oak Plain. So the three electives that they need to take for graduation, they had already completed those before they even came over to this campus. So they are doing well with their electives. So raising it above three, I think, is not going to impact our graduation rates that much, and we have a little more information on that, um, coming forward. The other thing is I, I just want to make a plug for electives. I think we all know how important they are. Electives give students an opportunity to explore something new, to explore potential careers in their future. Um, for students, it's, it's an area to shine. Maybe some students, they don't love some of their core classes, but they have talent in art or in music, and it's an opportunity for them to really showcase that in school, to make connections with other teachers, to have something to look forward to. Um, I have two teenagers also, and I know when I ask them about their day in high school, the first thing they tell me about is what they did in their electives. Um, so I just really want to encourage us to make sure our students are taking enough electives. And I would make kind of a side plug that I think we could even go further and expand that. Um, in Lake County, I was looking at what other schools offer, and we're one of only three schools that doesn't have a, family and consumer science department. We used to when I started here, but those are classes like child development, um, cooking classes. A lot of our students are looking for those classes, and they don't necessarily want the commitment of a tech campus program. They just want to try a couple of electives. So moving forward, I, that would be something to maybe explore in the future, is can we even expand the electives that we offer to give our students more opportunities? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kim Pash. I teach English at the high school at the Almond Campus here. Um, and I wanted to add a perspective, um, that I think is somewhat unique to me, but that actually, that a lot of teachers take on, which is I happen to be a parent in the district. My middle son is on that great basketball team with Susan Squire's son. Um, but I, because I have that, like, direct correlation, it's really easy for me to look, look at issues through the lens of a parent and kind of a teacher simultaneously. And I think a lot of, a lot of teachers do that. We take and say, what would we want for our child? And so with regard to graduation credits, um, the second kind of graph on your, um, the chart kind of on the bottom, it might be sort of a lot to process, but kind of in summary, what we have taken from that, and then I think you had a short, um, conversation about it at the last board meeting, is that most of our kids are graduating with a lot more than eighteen point five credits. And so the narrative that, um, has kind of come about, that we've heard it from a couple of different places, is that, so it's okay, because most of our kids are doing it anyway. And for me, as a parent, of course, my three children are being made by me to do that, to make sure that they have all those opportunities, that they're taking advantage of those elective, um, credits, that they're not sitting in two and three study halls a day, um, that they're not early released at twelve-thirty and going to nap for, you know, three hours before practice. Um, I, I make sure that that's happening. And what I would like to see is for Warren to make sure that we're not allowing any student, uh, to do that, because I would not want my own child to be able to do that. Um, let's not just push them through with the bare minimum. You know, I would never accept for my own child to say, I'm just not gonna take a fourth year of math. And in, in conjunction with that, I don't want to argue with my child about whether he's going to take a fourth year of math. I just want it to be required of them, and I want it to be required of all of the students here, including those who maybe don't have a parent who is savvy and, and looking at the course curriculum and thinking about future and, and advocating and nagging and doing all the things that our high, um, income, low-risk students have, you know, people doing for them at home. You know, I fear if I did tell my sixteen-year-old, who is a fairly responsible kid, like, yeah, just drop math and get out an hour early, he'd be like, sweet. Like, he might choose to do that. And so I don't think that only our upper-level children with support at home should be the ones that are encouraged to, to take advantage of those electives. Um, right now, we feel, um, that a lot of the students, because they are young people, are not, they don't, they don't know what they're missing. They don't realize that that accounting class might spark an interest or might spark, uh, more preparation for college or a future career. So we just want to make sure that all the students are being encouraged to do that, not just the ones who have parents at home nagging them and making sure that they do that.
Hi, I'm Heather Connor. Um, I'm the lead English teacher over here at the Almond Campus. Um, and I just kind of want to build off of a couple of things that, um, Kim said. Um, I think for, for many of us, what, everything we're saying here, we're all so passionate about kids' learning and having these opportunities to learn. Um, and really what we have in our current system, yes, many of our kids, most of our kids are going above and beyond the prescribed number. Um, and that's awesome. But we want all kids to do that. And part of the reason this is, has been a problem, is it allows for two separate sets of standards to exist. One, that, uh, Kim just mentioned, where we've got parents who are supporting, kids who are on top of things. And then we have another group of students, as Kim mentioned, where maybe the parents aren't as involved, not for their own fault, busy, working multiple jobs. Um, and then, of course, we have this, this population also where it feels like school's not for them, um, which more electives would help with. Um, but we don't want there to be some kids taking twenty-six credits and other kids taking that eighteen. Um, we have memorialized through our current process, um, that we worked with Danny and our ad hoc committee, um, one thing, and that is that all kids are required to be in six classes. Um, now, to be in six classes means one thing, um, but to engage and pass is another. Um, and so while we appreciate the fact that students do need to be in six classes, we are seeing, I'm personally not, because I'm a graduation requirement, um, we are starting to hear things like, um, I don't need this class to graduate, um, so I'm not going to take the test. Head goes down, Chromebook shuts. Um, attendance becomes a problem, because I don't need it to graduate. I'm just enrolled. And we don't want that to be our culture of learning and our, the way we want our kids walking through our hallways thinking. Um, and that's infectious, right? That's kids sleeping back in our day when we were young, right? And now it's cell phones. You see one, and it starts to be kind of this sort of domino effect. Um, and so that's really something that has become, you know, kind of something we're, we're growing more and more concerned about. The other thing that, um, Jenny mentioned, um, twenty-two is the number?
Yeah.
So currently, as it sits, um, with a study hall and a lunch and the required courses, students can fail eleven semesters of classes at Warren and still graduate. Eleven semesters. That's a lot of classes. Um, and that's not, again, a culture that we want to foster. We want to foster electives that inspire curiosity and learning and connections with adults, um, and other students. Um, and if they're not required to pass those classes, many of them will not be engaged. And I luckily don't have that experience, like I said, as a core teacher. Um, but hearing Michelle's stories and other people's stories, um, I think that it's something that will be echoed by many. Um, and that's not something that we want our students to, to be doing. And again, we, we have the statistics. Most of our kids are not, but we don't want that to become something that is happening in more frequency, so. Yeah, so can we answer any questions for you guys?
First of all, I'd like to thank you for your time tonight. I'm glad you, I'm glad you're here. I love hearing all the different opinions, because everybody's got an opinion on this, so the more we hear, the better. Especially, I forget who was talking about the, the electives. Thank you. Um, I can remember my kids, you know, we were all, take AP courses, take that, take that. You know, they had to take the electives, too. And it always seems like when they took an elective way out of their comfort zone, that's what they talk about the most. Like, oh, the stupid class. And then they talk about it for the next half hour. I'm like, oh, great. A question, though. So listening to people before you talk about the high school in the Bronx, is, is there more class work or credits we could get, or should look at getting for work outside of the classroom, in the community, for work or other things that we, maybe we're starting to offer now, or we should be offering more, or, just kind of curious what your thoughts are on that?
Yeah, absolutely. One hundred percent. That would absolutely be something that I think, I mean, like we said, we went to Chattanooga and, it was so inspiring and to see the kids interacting with adults the way that they were, um, the way they were getting their internships. They were required to get their own internships. We actually got to see, um, the community, so I think it's like once a quarter, she, the principal, um, that's what the principal calls herself. She, um, has a big group come together in a large space, and the kids are responsible for talking and getting their internships, yeah. Stuff like that, absolutely. I, we would one hundred percent support doing. Um, and we've done things in our classrooms as well, and our administrators have been very supportive of us trying new things. Um, but at the end of the day, we could be the most entertaining people, engaging people that you can be. Um, but if kids are not required to pass their classes, we're going to have a population that that's not going to matter.
When you guys talk about internships, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, if I could just add, because it does tie back to the advisory, um, one of the things that at Chattanooga they did say is that they tried to do advisory that was not credit-bearing the first year, and it went terribly, even for highly motivated students and a highly engaging, self-driven curriculum with these advisors and the principal. They still had really low success rate their first year, and their second year, they made that advisory credit-bearing. And so, yes, we would definitely, I think, all be for more and different types of elective opportunities to get those credits, but we don't want the kids just out of classes where they don't need the credit.
And Chattanooga was not, um, that was a more selective enrolled class comparative to the Bronx. So we were hearing that about the students that, like, on our data, we would say were more engaged and high-flying, and they were not buying into advisory. In fact, they said they were skipping it and not showing up. So, you know, at, at some point, we have to recognize they have a teenage brain, and.
Could you step up to the mic?
Sure. Sorry, sorry. So I would just have to sort of state the obvious. Um, I have a junior in high school myself right now, and, you know, sometimes when a kid is faced with a decision where I can do less, it's really hard to convince them to do more. And, and Chattanooga was an absolute perfect example of that. You know, we kind of saw that, which is why if we do adopt some form of advisory, we were pushing for it to be credit-based. So, and that could tie into credits, like, you know, again, I think we are of the philosophy, um, and Jenny, you could speak to this as well, like, we, when we were meeting, how many students are coming into our office and saying, you know, I, what elective can I take? I'm gonna do something different. Is there anything else? Um, we have a room full of amazing teachers who want to write new classes. We wanna, we wanna engage, we wanna invigorate, like, we're passionate about that. Um, we just want to make it count and mean something, so.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Sure.
First off, the four that went to Chattanooga, my comments stand for you as well, and then all the other groups that went off-site to explore and bring all this good information back, so. First off, thank you. Um, is the ad hoc committee still meeting, or is it?
We haven't met since I came to the board in January.
Okay. So, from my recollection, um, everything you said of how we got to the graduation requirements is correct. I mean, I was up on the board at the time, and it was both reasons of why to do it, and, but we've had some discussions through the years of being in a position to rethink with CTE and maybe advisory and maybe whatever else gets inspired by you on these trips of then how to attach the credits back onto something. So I don't think, um, just for perspective and from the conversations I remember through the years, um, some of which, you know, were more attended than others, but I think we probably were always gonna head back, but we're given a unique opportunity to think with a clean slate. with a clean slate, knowing CTE, knowing big picture visits, knowing talk of freshman seminar slash advisory or whatever else, how to reattach those in some kind of thoughtful way that kind of makes sense for us going forward instead of just a carte blanche, here's the number. So it was an opportunity, I guess you could call it, a unique opportunity. Maybe it's going a little slower than we probably wanted it to, but we also wanted people to really think through how to, how to make this happen because not everyone has this unique opportunity. So just to give you a little bit of perspective, so hence the reason I was asking, if that committee were to continue, and maybe it's some variation thereof, or it's just you guys meeting again after all these visits were to happen, like, how do we restore this in some kind of way that I maybe mentioned? Would be a great conversation to have. So thinking creatively, thinking future-focused, thinking, looking at the data of what our kids are asking for, parents are asking for, what the teachers, both faculty and staff feel is a need and kind of melding all that into some kind of advice for us to think through.
So I think I could add maybe a little bit of, I don't want to call it an experiment, but we have started over at the Almond campus, offering support classes during our lunch periods, so periods three, four, and five. I, along with a couple of our other core area teachers, I'm responsible for populating those classes based on recommendations from the teachers. In fact, we do have a couple of support teachers in the, in the, in the stands tonight. And we've had some really interesting, we haven't been able to do a very deep dive of data yet, but one of the interesting things that I'm seeing on my end is English. I'm seeing a lot of kids who want to re-enroll, even though they're doing all right. They're not getting a credit for this class.
Your class?
So this is during lunch period. So, yes, in my class, yes, yes. I have two students current, no, three students currently who are on their fourth rotation.
Okay.
So they started in the fall and they've wanted to stay, despite having a C. Two of them have, one of them has a B, one of them has a D, they want to stay.
What's at the core of that?
They're choosing, well, so that's the interesting piece, and that's what we need to do a little bit more work on because I think it's kind of what we're talking about in this vein of students who want a place, teachers want to give them that place. And I think we're seeing, I think I have about a dozen kids and I'm going to just ask, if you want to stay, stay next year too. Like, you're going to be a senior, let's see how it goes. And so it's been kind of this interesting, and I don't like to use the word experiment in education, but it has kind of been. I've been playing with a lot of things and I've been given the opportunity to do it.
I actually appreciate you saying experiments because I think that's...
It's not always popular work.
I know it's kids' lives and kids' futures, but it also doesn't do us any good to just keep doing the same things we've always done because we always have. And the fact that you're, have a willingness to try something, you can call it whatever you want, but I think we all appreciate the fact that you're trying these things. And I keep hearing these three Rs keep, they keep, your visits, I read them in articles, the relevance, rigor, and relationships, right? And I keep hearing that kind of come through in all these visits. The relationships, I know we're focusing heavily on, the rigor, credit work, all the additional electives that maybe you're recommending, of which, by the way, I educator and took the preschool class at Maine South and got the HomeX scholarship from that, which inspired me to go teach kindergarten for several years. So I'm with you on some of those experiment, experiences at high school because they can inspire certain careers. And then relevance, like all these internships, the Bronx visit, connecting to the community, why does that matter? Giving back. And then I would hazard a guess, a lot of those kids may even stay in the community because that's where they're connected to. So I keep hearing these themes every time a group of ours goes out. So anyway, I would, I love the feedback of the specific reasons as to why you feel from your professional lens of why these things need to exist. And if you have the opportunity to continue talking, how do you creatively restore these in a way that, you know, we have this kind of neat opportunity to do so? Not to have an answer now, but...
We don't.
I hope you get an opportunity to talk about it a little more.
Yes, if I could just touch back a little bit, you know, Tony, you had said the time is maybe a little longer than, you know...
I did.
And that's why, that's one of the pieces, and we don't want to just throw something to throw something the same. We agree with you, but we also wanted to stand before you and say that we're concerned right now because it's been five years and we're starting to feel the ramifications of this decision, and they're not good.
Yeah.
And that's what we're concerned about. So I don't know what the, I don't know what the magical answer is to reinstate credits, like what that's going to look like. We're happy to give our ideas and to put our heads together. We've been wanting to do that probably for a couple of years now.
And, you know, three probably of those years were the pandemic years, but I do, just to, you know, recognize we're in a very different place. But I think it's okay to give your, and welcome to give your professional recommendations, and that's why you're here today and...
Right, of course.
Yeah, continue to do so.
Right. I just wanted to convey that, like, if I gave you some of the other data of that survey, a lot of it is concerning.
You're expressing a sense of urgency is what I'm hearing.
Yes, I mean, not if, not if, yes, there's an urgency, but not without quality.
Okay, four of the five of you say yes because I saw the heck of it. I'm just kidding, but thank you, I appreciate that.
I think it's great and I'm okay that you say you're expressing your concern because we need to hear that. So I appreciate you saying that very much so, and I think we're all in agreement, you know, we need to do something and we all want to take the time to make sure that whatever changes, we have collectively thought about it together and come up with whatever path is the best that we decide upon. So thank you.
If I could just say one more thing, and I'm sorry, I'm just kind of like spitting things out. We don't also believe that graduation requirements are going to fix everything. Like, that's, we understand there's levels and layers. You know, like we said, the advisory, the support classes, when you start putting all of these things together, I think we're going to see great things. This is just one of those layers that we're passionate about.
I appreciate your passion.
I really appreciate that you all came to talk to us. I talked to a couple of you ahead of this, and I, I think it's really healthy for the board to hear from you. And rigor is one of our guiding principles, right? And this is a rigorous discussion, so I appreciate that. Support and innovation are two other pieces that go with that, right? And so one of the things I know we've talked about in terms of deliberating about what do we do with graduation requirements is wanting to have space to innovate, right? To do new things, not just return to where we were. I recognize, and we all agree with your interest in relationships and students being engaged and making the most of the time they have in high school. But it may be that we want to do that in a different way than we have done it in the past, and it takes time for us all to figure out what that's going to be, right? And a piece of that is, Heather, I appreciate what you're saying about how much students appreciate having more support, because I think one thing we're looking for is how can we reconsider the way we organize the whole system here so that we have more opportunities to provide meaningful support for all the kids, right? So those are the kinds of things that we're thinking about and deliberating on as we, we're with you. I think we're all interested in doing the same thing. We're just maybe doing it at a different pace than you were expecting we would, but thank you for coming and talking to us about it.
I'll second Susan's.
Okay.
If you don't mind, I'll second Susan's comments. And Tony, when he was talking about, you know, bringing all the pieces together, and I hear a lot about going off-campus for experiences and things like that, and it's hard for me to imagine what credit hours would be needed. How, how do you quantify those exact credit hours when we don't really have a solid thought about what those experience might look like if we were to move in those directions or, I don't know, we... Advisory, thank you so much, I'm old. But, you know, like, those, those things, that those, we have so many moving parts right now that are being explored, considered, right? And credits are a part of that. And so I think what Susan was saying, you know, just to take a number and say, we need to go halfway between where we were, or we need to go full way, or, what does that mean? Like, what exactly does that mean? And I think what Tony was saying is, you know, instead of just moving numbers, not that I'm suggesting you just do that, but it would be electives, we know that, right? But what does it look like? And what do we need? And what do the kids specifically need? Because, you know, asking them to do more credits, yeah, and, or have them accountable for what they're taking, yeah. But then we're also looking at, like, off-campus visits, and what kind of time would that take? And, well, would that limit our credit ability? You know, depending on how much time they're off-campus and how many ti, how much time they have in classes. So it's hard for me to conceptualize, but also I appreciated what you were saying about the supports at lunch because one of the things we've talked about is, many times, is when we have freshman failure rates, then I have understood the data to say that it is difficult to catch up kids, right? And part of the reason it's difficult to catch up kids, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I've been talking to people, used peoples, right? And the way I understand it is it's difficult because the, the classes are so prescriptive throughout their careers in four years. And so is that something we need to reimagine that if kids are really struggling, they failed now two classes freshman year, you said 11 classes, are those all core classes?
The 11 semesters.
11 semesters, right.
Yes, yes.
And I'm saying, like, they can't fail out of these core classes and graduate, right? So let's, let's take that as a...
But they do have space. They do have space their senior year because we're only at 18 and a half credits.
Take the classes?
To retake the classes.
But what about getting the help? And not all kids go at lunch, right? We kind of know that.
Well, so that's, to me, what's been so interesting about what I'm looking at, and I've got this list of kids, they all have something in common, and it is, they are quiet, they are compliant, they don't tend to do their work all of the time. They need someone who is championing them, who is emailing their teachers, who is getting them the extra Chromebook, who's getting them the darn charger, right? Like, so it's, it's the same, it's a very similar kid that has wanted to hang around.
I agree with you.
And so I think that we've definitely hit on something that I'm excited about, and I'd love to be able to try to get some of these kids to do this again next year because they're giving up lunch. They're half their lunch period.
I think that's my point.
Yes.
Is that instead of giving up lunch, is that something we need to imagine into the day? Like, these are the kids that, the exact kids, giving up lunch is giving up connections between their peers, right? And so we could probably all agree on that. So what does a credit look like to those kids who need that kind of support, who might not be able to pay for it after school, whose parents might not have the skills to help them, right? Because I have that kid right now under my belt, like, and so, and who's not going to go to lunch, no offense to you or anyone else at lunch, but he's not going to go to lunch, right? And so where do we imagine that when we talk about credits they have to have? Like, those supports, should they be expanded throughout the day?
So I think that we've talked a little bit about Dreamwise, like, if, if I could get this to run next year, if I could find a group of kids that are interested in the whole year, could we maybe offer them a credit there?
Right.
So you're on to something.
Yes, yes. This is, yeah, yeah.
That could be under the umbrella of an elective credit.
Understood.
You know what I'm saying? Like, whatever those things, those supports are, those things we need, we want them somewhere, we want them with someone. So what that, the language is maybe more generic, but earning those credits, we're all for that.
Right. So I think, I guess, to my point, to Tony's point, to Susan's, maybe, maybe even you, but I'm just saying, I'm just saying, there's a lot of moving parts, a lot of thoughts, a lot of people that want to see this all work in many different ways for many different cohorts. Like, I had one kid who is, you know, honors, went to school his freshman year of college and was a sophomore. Like, thank you, Warren Township, for supporting my kid. He was also very self-sufficient, one of those kids that wasn't going to miss a class, whatever, freaked out if he did. Then I have another adopted child who is the person that you see at lunch but won't go to lunch, right? And so that's not cool, you know, that's not cool as friends. So, yeah, I mean, I've seen both scenarios. And so I think there's so many moving parts here that just looking at numbers and credits is really hard for me right now because I want it to mean something, especially where we're struggling in data too. And so we're struggling in data with relationships, we're struggling in data with freshmen on track, especially in some cohorts. And so we've talked a lot about supports, right? We've talked a lot about, we've put a lot of money into supports, right? We want to see how that's working. So, yeah, I just, I'm just kind of echoing a lot of that, and I appreciate the discussion because I could have this all day because I'm, I, I'm a geek, like, I want to, I want to talk about it. And John doesn't want me to talk about it, but I appreciate the conversation. But also, I think we're at a place, like Tony says, where we just don't want to make, you know, just decisions because we, we have a number in mind. We want it to be meaningful with all these things, all these moving parts making sense.
I completely, completely understand. I just, I think the urgency here, though, is we're starting to see things culturally moving in a direction, I'm not going to say we have a culture of failure, but the, the temperature is right if we're not careful. Where kids can say to a teacher, I don't need this class to graduate.
They are saying.
They are saying that to teachers, and they're now going as far as not coming.
Yeah.
And it's...
I think they've said that for a long time.
And it's, well, but, but...
I remember my friend saying that to teachers.
No, I mean, no, they're...
I was saying, my friend said that, and my brother said that, so...
And maybe, and maybe the number of credits was different, but they didn't say it when it was 22 and a half because they couldn't say it because it wasn't true. They did need the class to graduate.
There were classes, they were...
Sure, there might have been a handful.
Absolutely.
But to, to your point about, about the time in their day and things like that, I'm an English teacher who loves math, they can, they could take, right, 18 and a half credits, that means they can take four or four and a half classes only per year, right? Per semester. They can take four and a half instead of our eight periods of the day, they could take 4.5 per semester and still graduate from Warren. So they have a lot of room in their schedule, four supports. Right, but I'm saying, when you're concerned about things like having time for support, having time to redo, they have a lot of time built into their schedule right now with only 18 and a half. Those kids who are, are most struggling students still have 3.5 periods per day, every semester of their high school career, open.
Assuming they don't fail two classes freshman year.
Well, right, but I'm saying, they would have three and a half open every semester thereafter, do you know what I'm saying? So every single semester, they have three and a half openings right now. So even if a kid failed two every semester, they would have three and a half openings the next semester because it's only 18 and a half credits. I promise, I've done the math.
She's definitely done the math.
I've done the math.
She checked her math.
I'm a little slower than I was.
Yeah, it is nine o'clock.
So we do, I mean, we do have a lot of room built in, but yes, we are completely in agreement that we want to build in those supports, advisories, things that are going to help those kids, and we want them to be credit-bearing. And so I think the two are very married. It's just a matter of, yes, us feeling as teachers, like, the time is coming, you heard the groan from the crowd, where we're just hearing a lot more of, like, I don't, I don't have to do this. I'm not going to come zero hour because I don't need this class, I'm not going to take this test. We did not have kids saying that to us before, like, I'm just not doing your test. And we do now, they'll close their Chromebook and say, I don't, I don't need this, I'm not doing it. So that's been new in the last, in the last...
And I think that's where the urgency comes in, like, we, we kind of want to cut that off as quickly as possible. We don't want that spreading because it spreads other places too, right? Like, now you've got an AP kid who's like, yeah, I don't need this class either, right? So it's just this, we don't want that to be the culture of our school because we're educators.
We're better than that.
Yeah.
Well, and the other thing is when a change goes into place, you start with the freshman class. So a change, it's not happening for next year's freshman class. At best, it's happening for the freshman class a year from there. By the time that hits Almond, best-case scenario, we're already five years out, you know? So I think that's the other reason there's a sense of urgency.
We allowed him to be up there.
It's okay, he happens on this board too.
He was coaching during a kind of a lot of...
Yeah, I'm pretty sure I heard Rob say, good luck.
But I, I mean, I will say, I, I teach science, I teach anatomy here, and science at this campus is all elective. So obviously, we want kids to take science. It's popular. A lot of kids do take science. I'm not saying they don't. Like, we have several kids taking three, four classes at a time right now. So I'm not complaining about that. But we are all elective here, and that is something that is of concern, because we do have kids that, even in my anatomy class, that are just like, "Well, I..." They just disappear one day, you know, like, "What happened?" Like, "I just didn't need it anymore," you know? And that's something that I want kids to stick through, because we do have kids that will find something in that case that they like. And that could be something that changes the way they do things from there on in their life. You know, I mean, it's something that happened to me when I was doing it. So I want kids to have that opportunity. I don't want them to just give up easy because they had one bad test, and then they just dropped the class, and that's done, it's over with, and then they're gone from us. So being an elective, completely at this campus, we got a lot of really good science classes. We want kids to stay in them. We don't want them to be, "I'm done" as soon as they have a bad score. Like, they got to learn rigor, they got to learn to bounce back, they got to learn all that stuff. And I think that's important for them to know, so... But, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, guys. Appreciate you guys very much.
I don't have anything to add to that.
To the student-parent handbook changes?
Yeah, so we provided this for first reading. It's an opportunity for the board to give feedback. There is a summary sheet in there. One thing I do want to call out, and I know there are some questions that board members have already asked that we can talk through. One thing I do want to call out is a new section called exploratory committees. There's often, when we talk about innovation or ways... People are thinking about things differently at other schools. One of the hurdles that we run into is sometimes process and procedure that's been here for a long time and is memorialized in our handbook. So it's referenced in the summary book, but on page 54 is a paragraph that says, "Hey, if a staff member's part of an exploratory committee that's been approved by the superintendent, they can, as long as it's approved by the superintendent and they communicate what they're trying differently in our handbook, then we can step away from the handbook in situations as long as they continue to follow board policy and state law." There are some implications of that, so that's something that you might want to consider thinking about, whether or not you're comfortable with that. Otherwise, I know some people had some questions. We can try to address those.
So one of the things that I wanted to bring up, which would relate more to chapter five, where it's registration residency. So back in December, I had learned that the affidavit of residency forms are not notarized. So my concern with that and my experience with that is that we should make it mandatory, because that is be guideline. In addition to that, if we're not requiring a notarized affidavit, if you go to arbitration, it's a null and void. You're going to lose. And there's a lot of families who are doubling up in our community. So if we're not mandating it now, we really need to look at making it mandatory for the protection of the district. So that would entail the affidavit of residency, and then if we have a property owner form. Both forms should be notarized, along with providing the proper residency documentation for both parties, which I don't know to what extent we're collecting, but we need to be very detailed in that, because again, if you go to arbitration, we're going to lose.
So you are 100% right. She's right. When the attorney went through and looked at this, they recommended that we consider the notarized affidavit. I think it's written that way in the model handbooks that the Illinois Principals Association gives us. 100% right. I think our team and Dr. Keely might correct me if I'm wrong. But I think what our teams talked through is that the notarization process is an extra step and sometimes hard for families if they have inconsistent housing. And so, they were thinking... I think we were thinking to try to lower some barriers. I think you totally identified the risk.
Yeah, I disagree with that, because you can go to the bank, okay? So if I'm living with you, I'm going to take my affidavit of residency form, and I'm going to go to the bank myself, and I'm going to have a notary witness that I'm Natalia Martinez, and this is my signature. Now, when you have time, you're going to go to the bank or to a separate place to get it notarized. We don't have to do it together. All we're doing is notarizing our signature and our identity. So when you bring it to the district, I'm showing you as the owner. You're showing your two pieces of utility bills, you're showing your mortgage statement. I'm going to show two or three pieces of my name to your address, right? So like, a lot of times, that affidavit of residency won't have a ComEd, it won't have a North Shore bill. But I'm definitely going to have a... I'm going to have a bank statement, a credit card statement, a medical bill. I'm going to have a driver's license. There's other items that you can collect. But the point here is, if you go to arbitration, because you find out that that student does not live within our boundary, okay? Arbitration's going to say, "Sorry, Warren, you didn't do your due diligence."
Yeah, I think you're totally right. I think she's right. And if you guys want us to modify that, I don't think anybody on our team...
So when you say that, like, you know, you want to limit the steps of what they're supposed to be doing, I disagree, because everyone's going to... They're going to go get the stuff notarized when they have their time. But we want to be diligent in protecting our students. We want to be diligent with protecting our school boundary overall.
Yeah, I mean, it is an extra step. But it's... I think you're right in terms of the risk.
But there's no risk.
Are you...
The risk that we have now, the risk that we're having now. I think you're completely right, that we are... We've got some extra risk right now.
Are you saying the owner has to have it notarized?
Yeah, so...
The property owner?
Yeah, both have to have it.
So how do you handle, and maybe you know this from work experience or just have heard, how do you handle the certain percentage of landlords that don't make themselves available? Like...
So a landlord isn't going to do that. This applies to people who say, "I'm living with my cousin, I'm living with my mom, we're living with the aunt." This is a doubled-up home situation, not a rental lease.
You don't have a lease.
When you don't have a... This applies to anyone who isn't a homeowner in the Warren District and who isn't a rental lease, right? There's no contract. This is someone who's saying, "I'm living with grandma, with my uncle, with my friend."
For some reason, when you were talking, I was thinking a... Yeah, I was thinking when you were talking with something different.
And the reality here is that we, within our boundary, we are a desired district, and there are many families who are stating they live with a family member, and they don't.
To clarify for me, then, one of the notarized lines on here that we... It's on there, it says "notarized letter," but we've crossed that off. The attorney put that in. One of them is "notarized letter of residence from landlord in lieu of lease." And then another one is "notarized letter of residence to be used when the person seeking to enroll a student is living with a district resident." So that's the double up. Are you only looking at that second double up, or are you also commenting on the first one?
No, I would only be on the double up, because if you have a rental lease, you should be providing your contract showing your rental lease dates within the active school year.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
If it were a financial burden, I'd be more concerned, but most banks do it for free.
Yeah, they do it for free. And even so, like, if you have a notary within the district, okay? So my work district. If a family can come in and one of our own staff who's a notary will do that for them. So that's not a barrier that they have, because if you have a... If Jean's a notary, you could say, "Hey, come on in. Jean can notarize it for you." Or if you have the registrar as the notary, she can do it for them.
Yeah, we're happy to do that.
Favor.
Sounds good. Makes sense. Anything else on this topic? Anything else on handbook changes? If not, let's go on to the action items. The first one up is an approval for the student fees for the next school year.
I think the only thing to reference here is that the big fees, registration, let's see, drivers, or not drivers, parking and athletics, those are the big ones. We're keeping those consistent. That was a commitment made at the time of the referendum. At some point in the future, the board might want to relook at that, but we're not recommending that change for this year. We are recommending a dollar increase to the technology fee as the cost of Chromebooks and all the stuff that goes in them and sometimes needs to get repaired goes up. So we're looking at, we're asking for a dollar increase next year.
Questions? If not, I move to approve the student fees for the 2025 through 2026 school year as presented. Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Pope. Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope? Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carries.
Thanks, Mox. Next up, we're looking at the resolution in support of the Illinois Vision 2030.
Yeah, the only reason I'm bringing this forward now, I had chosen not to bring it. Mr. Schultz and I had talked about it previously. But with some of the change in conversation around funding and possible less available funds in the future, I do think it's a good idea to go ahead and sign off on this. We can get on the list. That would allow our local legislators to go to the state level and advocate for us for continued funding.
Questions? If not, I move to approve the resolution in support of Illinois Vision 2030.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Anderson. Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
It's all good.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
And I'm going to call you one more time. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carries.
Glad you agree with yourself.
No worries. Next up is the first and final reading of the district board policies for Title IX.
Title IX regulations change at the federal level, so we're just reverting back to prior Title IX regulations. I think we're just required to do this.
Right. I move to approve the first and final reading of district board policies regarding Title IX regulation. Updates as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Martinez. Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carries.
Thanks. Next up, we're looking at some developer donations with Kayatt Enterprises.
I don't have anything to add to that. I'm happy to answer questions.
I don't remember if there was an answer on this or not, and if you...
That's okay.
Okay, you probably answered it. Forgive me. I swear, I remember Mike Ingalls saying that the county negotiated this on our behalf, which is why we never get developers in here, because I had questioned, "Why do we never get developers in here?", and that was always the response. But then this came along, which, being on the board for six years, I don't remember any other developer coming and talking to us about impact fees. Can you... What am I missing? Did it change, or was it never the way it was described?
Yeah, you might be right. I didn't answer you on this. We just can't find anything that says that if it's within the municipality. If it's in... We do have an agreement with the county for county-level developments. So if the development was in the county and not within the village jurisdiction, we do have an agreement with them. So we talked to the attorney about it, and I still think that there's a chance we might be unnecessarily doing this.
Yeah, because with all the development and gurney, you would think sometime over the last six years, someone would have come. And so, I maybe... I mean, we'll do whatever we were doing for today with the information we have, but it might be worth a call over to someone at the county to figure out if anything was in place and what that jurisdiction was.
I can tell you the county has no jurisdiction over what development or gurney from experience.
Then it's super odd to me.
Other than things like stormwater and that sort of thing, but no, not like this, not impact fees.
It's super weird to me that...
Overgetting impact fees?
That we've never heard from anyone over the last six years. It's just super, very odd.
The impact fees are only on residential.
Understood, but when I was on Woodlands Board, it was pretty, I don't want to say regular, but it was not uncommon for a developer to come in. "Hey, we're going to market toward 50-plus and older. We're not going to have any kids in your system. We're asking you to waive the fees," or they would just have a... I mean, it happened. Woodland-Warren's boundaries are overlapping, so it's possible, but I've seen some around here, but...
Very few residential developments.
And maybe that's the answer.
There's almost none.
Well, that could be it.
Almost. Well, there's the one that 55 and over community on Cages Lake and Huntcliff.
Tony could totally be right. Would we...
I can be totally wrong.
We started looking into it when we met with a developer to understand the project better. The impact fee was so little, I just have put it on the bottom of my list to continue looking.
385 bucks.
I do think it's something that I need to better understand in the future.
Just need clarity.
Anything else? If not, I move to approve the developer donation agreement with Kayatt Enterprises as presented.
Second.
Motion by Schultz, second by Anderson. Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carries.
Thanks, everyone. Anything else we need to talk about tonight?
Just an announcement to the public, if they're listening or watching after the fact. I mentioned this at the last board meeting, but our platform for public documents is switching over. And so, it might be the next meeting, it might be the one after that, but at some point in the next 15 to 60 days, we'll be migrating to a new system off of board docs.
Anything else? If not, I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Anderson. Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.